We'll call the meeting to order as we begin all of our meetings with everyone's please rise, remove your headgear, and join us as we say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one change to the agenda, and it's on page two, number three, consideration to approve the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school calendars. We're just gonna delay that for a meeting or two and make sure everything's coordinated before we throw it out and approve it. So, that would be the only deletion here. So, Jeff, you have anything else?
Nope, that is it.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And Jolynn on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Clint has worked around Clint. Luke has work duty and won't be in attendance, so excuse me for not announcing that before. So, Luke is not here. Under new business, organization of the board, review of policy 209, annually we name our officers to the board. There does not need to be anybody you nominate, there does not need to be a second to that nomination. So, just let you know. So, I will open up, as we begin, the election of the chair, and I look for nominations.
I will nominate Bob.
Brian? Are there any other nominees for the chair job? Third and final time, are there any other nominees for the board chair job? The nominees close, and by acclamation, Bob is the chairman of the board for the upcoming year. Thank you for your support. Second is the election of the vice chair slash treasurer, delegating statutory duties to the office of business affairs. We'll now open up nominations for the vice chair job.
I nominate Luke.
Luke has been nominated by Jolynn. Second call, do we have any other nominees for vice chair? Third and final, do we have any other nominees for vice chair? Nominations are ceased by acclamation. Luke is our vice chair treasurer for the upcoming year. Election of clerk, delegating statutory duties to the office of business affairs. Do we have a nomination for the election of clerk?
I'll nominate Jolynn.
Clint has nominated Jolynn. Any other nominees? Second request, any other nominees for the election of clerk? Third and final, any other nominees for the election of clerk? Nominations will cease. By acclamation, Jolynn is the clerk for the upcoming year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that was by Clint, correct?
Right.
Yep. So, we have a great deal of these procedural things that we take care of on an annual basis, and you'll see them all here. By statute, by policy, we have to go through all of these. Some of them will be easily voted, and others, if you have any questions, we will just roll into the any questions you may have. We'll start by establishing the time and place for board meetings. As you know, the second and fourth Mondays at 6:00 PM right here, and one meeting scheduled for various dates throughout the year. So, does anybody have any questions or concerns about how we're currently operating the meetings, both date and time? If not, I would look for a motion to approve, as shown.
I'll make the motion.
Jolynn on the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the continuance of the meetings as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is Carrie. Designation of the official paper. We have a official paper in our community. I would look for a motion to designate the newspaper of your choice. Who wants to?
I'll make a motion to designate Canffal's Beacon. Is there an official newspaper?
I'll second.
Clint, on a motion to name the beacon? And seconded by Katie? Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of naming a beacon as our official paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is Carrie. The official posting place for the school board meetings, meeting notices, is in the district office. Right out in the hallway there, right out front. That has not changed. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Clint, seconded by Jolynn. Other discussion? All in favor of the posting place as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is Carrie. Designation of the depository in accordance with Minnesota Statute 118A dot O2. Jeff, what are we dealing with here?
Yeah, we have a five-year rotation on our banks where we use one new bank every five years to kind of spread the wealth, if you will, throughout the community. We are currently on the first farmers and merchants bank rotation, and that is there until December 31st, 2027. And this has been going on for quite a few years, so I'd recommend keeping that.
I'll make a motion to keep it as is.
Clint, on a motion to continue with the depository as stated? Second?
I'll second.
Katie, on the second? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is Carrie. Designation of the board's legal counsel and authorized contacts. We have Ratwick, Rosack, and Maloney. The soup district office personnel and school board chairman are the authorized contacts. Would you like to continue with Ratwick, Roswick?
Rosack.
Ratwick is all we ever call him, so that's what we'll continue. Have a motion to approve Ratwick?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brian?
I'll second.
Second by Jolynn. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of our legal counsel being Ratwick, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Establish the annual salary for board members. Currently, it's at $1,250, half and half in June and December. As you can see, negotiators are paid an additional $250, just because of the effort that goes into negotiations. So, would you like to continue with that amount? Do you have any statements either way on it?
I had a thought, kind of outside the box. It, I guess I was kind of thinking, what if those funds that get paid out to us, if they just went into a separate fund, and then maybe on a yearly basis, we decide as a board that it goes towards something towards a school? Whether it goes towards something for mental health, or something for security, or something. I guess I, quite often, I think a lot of us donate, a lot of us back anyways, so I guess I was just thinking, make it something organized, make it, and then add it all up at the end of the year, so it's a little bit more of a lump sum, so we could maybe do a little bit more with it, was my thought.
Is that possible to do something like that?
These, it's possible to do wherever you want. There's an effort that's put in here, and we went through a number of years ago, discussion that was anywhere from $6,000 to Oatana, to some schools in our area pay per meeting that they go to, any meetings that they attend. Different meetings require different money. I think Triton, for example, is that. We seem to be in the middle of things when it comes to stipends, I call them, so... To me, your time and, your time is worth something here. Not belittling your statement at all, but I think that we should consider that stipend, and if people want to personally donate their amount, they can certainly do that. Any thoughts? You run by these, and this is your second superintendent job.
Yeah, we've had, I've had board members donate their stipends to whatever cause they want to, and I believe it would be kind of a pre-tax deal, or do they have to go through the tax changes on that, Josh?
Well, we budget it for the funds, so it just wouldn't be paid out. Yeah, if it were to be paid on the stipend, there would be a tax, exactly, for that.
So, yeah, I, if you guys all want to agree on donating, I think that's one thing, and then, I mean, you guys can do whatever you want.
I mean, it could be something where we make the decision, and maybe we do it for a year or two, and put a date and a time on it, and then if people don't like it, then we go back to how we did it, or, I don't know, it was just a thought. If a larger sum would put a little more dent into something, be more effective, I guess, but...
I like the thought.
Yeah, just something different, something outside the box.
Kind of a scholarship writing or something?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
The only thing I don't like is that Luke's not here to...
I had said something.
Oh, okay.
I had a tip to him already, yeah, yep, and he just had made the comment that let's, as long as there's a plan for where it's gonna go, and it could be, that could be different every year. If we thought something was maybe more important one year or another, or, I don't know, anything, but I just, something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like the path personally, but, you know, majority rules here, so, again, I think that if somebody wants to individually donate to a cause within the school, they certainly can. For others that want to use their stipend for whatever they use it for, again, there's an effort here, so... We haven't had much talk about it. We can delay this, if you want, for a meeting to give us more conversation on it.
Let's do that. I'd be in favor of delaying that until the following meeting.
I think the thing to think about is, it's, you're looking at, what is the annual salary? Not necessarily what to do with it, per se. And so, I do think that there is probably that middle ground of, if this is gonna be the salary, you want to keep it the same, and if people want to donate it, then that's up to them, you know, individually, instead of forcing people as a whole.
Well, I mean, it could be voted on.
Yeah, but I think you maybe identify the cause, and if you want to, oh, you're whoever wants to donate to it, then, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Clinton, you suggested we table this for a future meeting?
Yeah, let's table this for a meeting if we could.
Okay. Clinton votes on the table. Do I hear a second on the table?
I'll second.
Motion by Clint, seconded by Jolynn, to table the annual salary for board members to a future meeting to allow us for a little more discussion. Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor of table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Payroll authorization for use of a facsimile signature on payroll vouchers in accordance with the Statute 47, 41, and 47, 42. What is it?
Just using, instead of a what signature, using a facsimile signature.
Put the stamp on it.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the use of a facsimile signature.
I will make a motion to approve that.
Clint on the motion, seconded by?
I'll second.
Katie?
Yep.
Other discussion? All in favor of the use of the facsimile signature for payroll and voucher checks? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the resolution for the combined polling place.
This is done a year in advance, and so we were doing this for '25, and '24 was done last year, and so if we do have an election this, we have to pass a resolution ahead of time saying that we're gonna use a combined polling place.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And it is a resolution.
Motion by Clint, seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brian? Any other discussion?
Pages are hiding on.
You finding it?
Working on it. Where are pages hiding on?
They're not numbered, so you're like...
No, they're not.
It's about two-thirds of the way back. Education identities on the face page.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Title?
Unless you want to read the entire thing.
But be it resolved?
Resolution at the top.
Just read that?
Just that.
Call that good, okay. Resolution establishing combined polling place from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025 for multiple precincts, and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election.
So, a yes vote would be to make sure we got the combined polling place at City Hall?
Yeah, the combined polling place would be City Hall. That should probably be announced as well.
So, combined polling place, Canffal City Hall, 918 River Road, and Canffal, Minnesota. Do I get a vote from Clinton?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I also vote yes.
Okay, that passes by a 5-0 vote. Authorization allowing the soup to approve purchase up to $10,000. Give us just a little bit of background on that.
Yes, and so, if there are any emergencies, this authorizes me to spend up to $10,000 of non-budgeted money to take care of emergency situations, which really, it hasn't come up hardly at all, if any.
In such cases as we have, it's prevent us from convening a meeting when he can take care of things from here. And what is the range that you see of those numbers?
From other schools?
Yeah, we were at $5,000 for a number of years, and that was pretty antiquated.
I would say $10,000 is about right, from what I've heard other school districts have.
You feel comfortable there?
And that didn't run into any issues last year with that?
Okay, so we'd look for a motion to approve the superintendent allowed to make purchases or decisions up to $10,000.
I'll make the motion.
Jolynn?
I'll second.
On the motion? Katie, on the second? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Designation of the superintendent as our LEA. I won't read the whole thing, that's another procedural thing.
In a, yeah, in a nutshell, this authorizes me to give access to people that work here to state systems and data at MDE.
Can we have Lori's name down here? That would be...
She's the assistant.
In such cases, yes, yep.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Clinton on the motion?
I'll second.
Brian on the second? Other discussion? All in favor is designated the superintendent as our LEA assisted by Lori Hanson, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. Committee assignments? We have several. I contacted a couple of you to make sure that we were still good with whatever assignments you had this year, and if there was any other interest in any different direction. So, upfront, our finance committee. Luke has said he would take the finance committee again, and I'm gonna ask Brian if he would be our alternate to that.
Yes.
Okay? Facility. Luke and Clinton are past liaisons, and they will continue to do that, and the only exception would be, I think we should drop the word alternate off Clint. Facilities have been pretty busy, and we need them both.
If I'm an alternate, I sure as hell don't want to be a full-time.
Well, you've got no say in it anymore. Moving down to negotiations and personnel. Bob and Clint will be our negotiating representatives, and Katie has not agreed, but she will be on there.
All right.
Okay, moving on. District advisory on curriculum and tech. I've asked Brian to take over the WTECH, which meets quarterly in Zambroda at 7:00 PM.
I think it's 6:00. Doesn't it, no?
No.
You sure?
I, yes, I am sure. So, Brian is on there, and I will serve as his alternate.
Okay.
Unless you want to, Katie.
Nope, that's okay.
We are gonna split WTECH off and make it its own entity, 'cause it seems to fit better. And then Katie has said she will be on the curriculum and tech committee at our local level. Have we had an alternate to that, or is there unnecessary, do you feel?
How many times do we meet?
Four times.
Four times.
And Bob, I think you were the alternate.
Yeah, I think you were the alternate.
I was?
But, but I don't usually have too much trouble now that we have it on Tuesday, you know, the Tuesdays and Thursdays is 3:30. I can usually get there on time, if not 10 minutes late.
You know, I'll continue to be an alternate if you need me.
Okay.
Just call.
Okay.
So, Brian's just doing the WTECH?
Mm-hmm.
That's where we are so far. Brian is doing the WTECH, I'm gonna... Staff development. Jolynn, you consented to doing that for another year?
Mm-hmm.
And Katie, you were the alternate, have you been?
I have not had to go, but I can, like, I can still be the alternate.
Yeah, let's put you down for alternate on that. GCED. Unless someone wants that, that meets at 6:00 PM, I believe, on third, on the third Thursday of the month. I've been doing it for the last year. I will continue to do it unless somebody wants that, specifically wants it. Okay? Bob is a GCED cord, or liaison. Transportation. Clint, you did it last year, you'll do it again?
Yes.
So, Clinton, is that transportation liaison? If you need any help, just check with us, otherwise, well, again, they meet quarterly or so?
Last year was only two meetings. We already have one this year, but, yeah.
You're getting the curve.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Clinton is the transportation rep. Community Ed and Ed Foundation. Jolynn, you stepped up and said you would do that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, Jolynn is our rep on that. Jolynn, if there's any concerns, or you do have any scheduling issues, just reach out, you'll be able to fill that, I'm sure. Minnesota State High School League Extracurricular. Luke wanted to continue on with that, and I will be his alternate. So, Luke moves up from the alternate spot to that main spot, and Bob would be his help if it needed. That's kind of an ad hoc group anyway, isn't it?
Yeah, he needs me semi-regularly.
Yeah, maybe two times a year.
MSBA slash policy. Katie, you've done it?
Mm-hmm.
You'll continue to do it? That's fine with you? Okay, Katie will be our representative there. Marketing ad hoc committee. Jolynn, you've done it?
Mm-hmm.
You'll continue to do it, which is fine?
Mm-hmm.
Brian, would you alternate on that as well?
Sure, I can.
Do we need to have a second person for Community Ed and Ed Foundation, or we're just gonna go with one?
Tell me about how are the meetings, what time are the meetings?
It's quite a few meetings.
It's, I mean, they're two separate entities, two separate meeting times, and I don't, I don't have an issue with the timing, I guess, for it's out for me. Every once in a while, it happens where I can, like, if it's a work something or whatever, but occasionally it is nice to have just a, at least maybe an alternate that spot, probably.
Okay. Would anyone step up to be alternate? It's, they're unusual times, aren't they?
7:00 AM or 11:00 AM, yep.
I don't like that.
Yep.
That one works good.
Just...
Let me keep you as an alternate, maybe?
Yes.
You will alternate that?
A hard alternate.
Yep, which is, which is fine, which is fine.
Whatever that means.
Well, that's...
Means only if absolutely...
How about not a facilities alternate kind? How about that?
Lori, did you get all those?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to reports and communication. Usually we have, I haven't had a chance to look in here, does anyone have anything? Elementary school, they've got a posting in here, middle school, high school. Tim, anything for us?
I think everything is in my report.
Okay, thank you. Community Ed activities, read.
Nothing with that.
Busy time of year. As it is for the director of facilities and maintenance, I think he put in his report, busy, busy this time of year. Moving down to the soup's report. Anything for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to re-clarify, I think we mentioned this in December, but I want to make sure that we kind of all know that the finance committee has, you know, made that recommendation of heading toward that operating levy. I will be getting some survey ready for the community that you guys can review, so we can look at tax tolerance and also some numbers as well. We want to get that survey out probably mid-February to late February timeframe, and then start marketing that piece as well for November, so that we have an idea of what the tax tolerance is of the community for now.
Okay. Questions for Jeff?
Just a reminder, we have MSBA for those that you guys may have forgot, starting, well, some of you's tomorrow night, and the rest of you on, coming up on Wednesday night or Thursday, so...
You got the phases to go through, don't you?
Yeah, I have. Lucky dog.
Let me know how Tuesday night goes.
Yeah, correct.
That's it for you?
That is it. Mr. Davis, any questions?
Moving down, public input. Comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers, people with children in the district, and may not exceed three minutes. And if there's multiple statements, getting ready. I would ask that, you know, you merge your comments to one or two speakers, and please announce who you are, and there you go.
Hello, my name is Michelle Braun, and I'd like to play you the song of my people. Ew!
Yeah, well done.
Three deceptively simple notes, which unlock a core memory for the majority of the population. I call them deceptively simple because by the time I teach fourth graders how to play hot cross buns on the recorder, we have built a foundation of knowledge about high, middle, and low notes, reading lines and spaces on the staff, the woodwind family of instruments, combining melody and rhythm, the history of street calls in the United Kingdom, and the musical alphabet. Nothing in education happens on accident. We are experts in our field. In order to teach this simple song, I received a Bachelor of Music in Music Education with a classroom specialization, and went on to earn a Master of Music in Music Education with an emphasis in Kodai. I student-taught with a nationally known Kodai educator, and I now travel around to regional and national conferences to present to my peers. The Kodai philosophy teaches music as a second language, using a prepare... using a prepare, present, practice model to build student literacy of melody and rhythm with a sequential approach throughout their years of education. And most of the people in this room have never heard of it. Nor do they need to concern themselves with the what, the why, or the how of teaching music because the good people of Cannon Falls hired an expert. I was not provided a curriculum nor a textbook series and yet the students of Cannon Falls are learning how to read and write music daily. Yet, reading and writing music is not what most students will remember from music class. We sing, we play instruments, we play games, we dance, we perform, we create core memories. I can still name every single teacher that I had in elementary school. Teachers hold a special place in the heart of students and students hold a special place in the heart of their teachers. I've taught in Cannon Falls for seven years, but I do not live in Cannon Falls. I live in Hastings and have students that attend the Hastings School District. Last year, an elementary music job came open in Hastings. I chose not to apply, but a friend of mine sent me the salary schedule. By working in Hastings, even with having only 10 years of experience recognized, I'm currently at Step 14 in Cannon Falls, I would be making over $10,000 more than I currently do in Cannon. As a single mother, it is challenging enough to get by financially, but when you factor in the commute time, the gas money, being late to sporting events after school, and how hard it is to manage two separate district calendars, I'm not sure I could pass up an opportunity like that again. I'm one of many teachers who commute from outside the school district but choose to stay year after year because of this wonderful community. But the reality is that there are many, many factors that impact that choice. I adopted my children out of foster care. The money that I receive from the state each month is more than my take-home pay from the school district. Without this money, we would not be able to remotely afford the modest townhouse we live in nor the Subaru that I drive 20 miles each way to school every day. When teachers ask for a living wage, we are not asking for luxury. We are asking for basic middle-class necessities. Money to pay our mortgages, buy food for our children, and have a dependable car to drive. Teachers create core memories for children. So on behalf of my elementary teachers, Mrs. Rosenberg, Mr. Clausen, Ms. Farmer, Mrs. Critchell, Mrs. Murgener, Mrs. Warren, and Ms. Sherwood, and all the teachers that have shaped every single person in this room to be who they are, I ask the school board to consider finding a way forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue on with public input. Does anyone else wish to speak?
I do.
Okay, please recognize your.
My name is Angela Rosendahl and I teach first grade. I'd like to draw your attention to the very real consequences that putting teachers last for years has caused. The things I am about to share are from real teachers in this district who care for and educate your children. We have very real concerns that interrupt our daily emotional, mental, financial, and family lives. The CFEA membership answered a survey a few weeks back about the current situation and what is happening in their lives right now. I know that the results and comments were shared with the negotiation subcommittee of the board. I'm sure that Mr. Sampson has shared those results with the rest of the board and probably administration, and I will speak to those results tonight. Of those surveyed, 51 people chose to leave a comment to further explain their positions and what it would mean to settle for what the district is offering. Of those 51 people, 18 explicitly stated a feeling by specifically using the words bitterness, frustration, anxiety, sadness, disrespect, and stress. If you read the rest of the comments, nearly all 51 expressed something that alluded to any of these sentiments. This alone is cause for concern in terms of mental health and morale. But to continue to read these comments is, in my opinion, heartbreaking. Sorry. The discussions from our young teachers here who have started or who want to start families but are feeling anxiety about being able to afford to do so. The expressions of living paycheck to paycheck. The need for all of the single-income people and some of our two-income families to seek aid elsewhere or who work one or two side jobs are all incredibly devastating and insulting to our profession. At the last board meeting, I believe Mr. Shelquist expressed that we are not the only district dealing with a long negotiation period. But I would like to draw your attention back to our district and our teachers because the consequences of not understanding who we are will be unfortunate to the community as a whole. 18, same indifference, of those 51 people also explicitly stated that they are considering leaving, actively searching, or weighing options from other districts. While it may seem inconsequential to you now or easy to say there is nothing you can do if teachers leave, I'd invite you to research the statistics of national and state data about the very real trend of declining students entering education in universities all around us. We've already seen that without raising the pay for substitutes, we don't attract any. I could go on, but what I really want to say after all of this is we are worth it. We are worth a better budgeting plan going forward where teachers are put high on the list of assets to keep, retain, and attract. I want to believe that you respect our professionalism, that you care about keeping all of these amazing teachers here. We like each other. We work well and collaborate together for you, our community, and most of all, our students. I am asking you, the board, on behalf of my colleagues and myself to please put into action what has long been promised. Invest in us with the same determination and responsibility that we teachers invest in our Cannon Falls children. Thank you.
Would anyone else wish to speak? We will close public input. Thank you for your input. New business. Consideration to approve the Cannon Falls school classroom size guidelines.
There was a request to review the classroom size guidelines by a couple of board members, so I thought I'd bring this to the board. Doesn't necessarily need approval, but there are questions around the guidelines. And you can see, um, they were last approved in September of 2020 because I believe there were some small changes made then. But basically it flows anywhere from special education classrooms to preschool classrooms, elementary, and then into the middle school. Any questions over the guidelines?
Do we have any data of what other schools are at? Where do we rank for what we consider? I know everyone needs to understand that this is just a guideline. This is not something that's set in stone. But I'm just curious where other districts fall.
The HBL puts together numbers every year specifically, more than likely in the elementary side of things because the high school varies from.
Class to class.
Class to class, I would say. So it's really more based around the elementary numbers. Very similar in the guideline pieces of it.
Okay.
I know, I know these were put together with some research-based pieces as well about best practices in putting this together.
I just know when I was in elementary, my class sizes were always over 30. Now I had a. But I have no clue what our guidelines were at that point. Now, I would say that's probably definitely too many and we don't want to get up to that mark. But considering the financial situation that we're in now, we might have to look at doing some different changes here.
And again, these are guidelines.
Correct, exactly.
If there are questions, we can certainly talk it through.
Brian, you teach at Farmington. Can you give us any kind of knowledge of what's Farmington like?
Yeah, at Farmington, we are a little bit higher than this, particularly in the, at the very lowest level at the kindergarten first. We don't really have guidelines for middle school, which is where I teach. This year I have classes that range from 25, I have one class of 25 due to scheduling, and most of mine are about 33, 34. We had a couple of years back, a big grade, like I think your grade probably was coming through and the district was faced with, do we add a position or do we just spread them out? That year, that year was tough. It was 35 to 36 to 37.
So what grade do you teach?
I'm sixth grade, but it's middle school, part of the middle school there. It, you get in those middle 30s, it's difficult. I don't care what a study says about, about.
Right.
It doesn't, it certainly does when you're trying to get around to that many students. I think I love Cannon's class sizes for my own children. As I've watched, now I'm up to a third grader and I applaud the class sizes that we have here because I know at Farmington, we are, we are higher. We certainly are.
What was it? Was it, was it fourth grade that we ran into that this fall, right? Where we had a potential.
We've kept an extra section in third grade since the pandemic. And then fourth grade, we added another section.
This fall.
This fall.
Because we were potentially getting close to being higher than what we like to be, than what we strive to be in Cannon Falls. We strive to have those smaller class sizes to the best of our abilities.
Yeah, we have the difficulty where one year I might be teaching this and then the next year I have to kind of follow that group, which is a bit larger group, to where like this year I'm teaching sixth and seventh grade as I'm kind of following a larger clump sum that we have as well, so. Changes in there.
You know, years ago philosophically, we wanted to keep those youngest, the youngest group, the smallest numbers. We just felt like they're entering into a different phase in their life when they're five and six years old and four years old. We wanted to be able to get them well-grounded and begin their education process on a positive note. And I'm not sure where I'm going with this other than to say that was, that was what we were reaching for at the time. So.
Well, and I can't imagine, I've got a three-year-old and a four-year-old. I can't imagine having in the 20s or close to 30, a three-year-old, four-year-old running around and having one poor teacher trying to corral those kids. That would be a nightmare. That wouldn't, that wouldn't work, that wouldn't be successful. When we added.
Well, there's state guidelines for that too, isn't there? Yeah.
When, when we added on.
For the preschool age.
Yeah, I believe so.
For ratios.
For ratio, yeah.
Yeah. When we added the fourth grade, so when we found ourselves in that position where we felt the need to add, roughly how much does that run us when we're throwing in an extra?
We budget what, 60 to 70 thousand dollars per FTE? When we're looking at adding, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. Seventy.
And I believe when we added the two, two this year, it was just by bringing a kid over one of our guideline, like.
The one in, the one in fourth grade was around, I think we were at 29 in one of the sections and.
Okay, it was, it was up to 20, okay.
Yeah, it was 29.
Yeah, so one, one over, one over the top side, yes.
I'm not sure where we should be going with this at this point in time.
There, I don't think there is anything to go with because, I mean, I don't.
Well, it's an action item, but I don't know if it needs to be an action item more than discussion. We certainly will have to.
I think it's just good to revisit it and just kind of remind us that, of what we have in place.
Procedurally, if there are reductions forthcoming, then these guidelines would kind of be all part of that process.
Follow, please, yes. It'd be used as a, as information.
Guideline.
As guideline.
Yeah, it's always tough, Brian, when we're, when we're measuring ourselves with metro schools because there's, there's differences there. I'm not sure we are where we are relative to KW or Zambroda or Lake City or some of those schools. And I think that's always kind of a nice thing to at least understand.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good to review this stuff too. I think it's good to look over it and.
Well, and just remember what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve it. To keep their guidelines the same.
Do we need to?
Isn't it?
We didn't know where else to put it.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Other than.
Needed to go somewhere.
Yeah, at the beginning of it, I said, I didn't really know where else to put it other than to put it in the action items.
Well, thank you for putting that on there.
Well, that's more of an FYI for.
More of an FYI.
Anything else on that? If not, we'll move forward. Consideration to approve the Eckloff Family Scholarship for two grand.
Yeah, this is a new scholarship that we're asking for approval. We've received a request to create a new one-time, $2,000 scholarship called the Eckloff Family Scholarship and the scholarship will be rewarded as follows. There's a paragraph there that has been decided upon what the scholarship will be determined for. So looking forward.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the acceptance of the scholarship. Correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's motioned by Jolynn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clinton. Any other discussion? Here's a family, I think the graduate is 1958, who's reaching out to his alma mater and saying, we want to contribute at least on an annual basis. That's very cool. So.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the acceptance of the family scholarship from the Eckloff family? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's getting a little greedy, man.
Some meetings actually do get a vote.
Lori's called me out when I.
Yeah, I know.
Procedurally don't handle that. Consideration to approve the 23 to 25 Cannon Valley Senior Center use of facilities.
Yeah, this is, the agreement is up for renewal. And I believe there's just a very small inconsequential change in that agreement.
Just ending it Friday.
That's right, because they used to be Monday through Thursday and it's Monday through Friday and then obviously a date change. So they've been great partners for us over the years and I think we should continue to have them use our facilities.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie on the motion to approve the use of the facility by senior citizens as shown?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Katie on the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Other discussion? All in favor of the agreement as shown? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve the 23, 25 community use of facilities and equipment.
Ree, you could probably speak a little bit to this, but there's kind of just some small inconsequential changes in here as well.
Add some items in red to the last two pages based off of. We have a request for a summer rental to use some outdoor and indoor facilities for.
Auctions.
Different lengths of time and kind of odd hours, and we didn't have any of that included. So if you want to, if you're not happy with this, then we can take it to committee if you like, but we just put something together here in meeting with Dave and put some things down in place. For example, that under B, we added South Green space to tie that.